Under the consent agenda, we need to add letter F. Fluvana High School's Ag and Carpentry Surplus. And we need to add letter F to action items. The approval of the middle school HVAC and roof repair renovations. That's an authorization, remember me this time?
Yes. Did you have another item?
Yes, please. Under the superintendent's report, at the very end, I'd like to add the draft of the letter related to expedited retake update from Virginia Department of Ed. It's in your packet, and if there are questions, I'll have Dr. Matheson speak to that. I thought it would be good for the board to see that.
Speaker, where are you putting that now? Where will they be added?
Under K, reports from the superintendent. It would be the last bulleted item after spring board for 2015-16. So I'm strong on the expedited retake letter. There's a draft, and we would just like to inform the living about the new procedures for that.
Any other revisions to the agenda?
Well, I just have a question. I believe you said to put the ban on the Ag and Carpentry Surplus?
Under the consent agenda.
Under the consent agenda. Have you received any tailing?
Yes, it was in your drop box.
The most recent version?
Any other items? If not, you need a motion to adopt the agenda as amended.
So move?
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Now, under consent agenda, any items that anyone would like to pull from the consent If there are none, I need a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. We're in our first round of public comment. Anyone who wishes to address the school board must state their name and address, and limit their comments to three minutes. This is a time for comments only. Questions should be submitted to the school board in writing, and will be given to the appropriate person to answer as soon as possible. One person who signed up, Keri Johnson.
My name is Keri Johnson. I live at 539 James Madison Highway, and I am speaking tonight as president of the Fluvana Education Association. I'd like to thank you again for taking time at last month's meeting to listen to the results of the Focus on Fluvana FBA survey. It was disappointing, of course, to hear some of your reactions, as it's been disappointing for the last four years to look at the results of some of your own staff surveys and see the steep decline in positive outcomes to questions about teacher support and staff input. For example, according to your own survey, four years ago, 81 percent of staff felt supported by the school superintendent, and 71 percent felt supported by the school board. By last spring, your numbers had fallen from the 70s and 80s down to 46 percent and 47 percent respectively. Also, four years ago, 78 percent of Fluvana staff felt they could openly provide input regarding the school division. By last spring, your survey reported that number reduced by almost half, when less than 41 percent agreed. So even if you choose to discount the source of the most recent survey, where only 18 percent of respondents agree that school decision-making is transparent and that staff opinions can be heard in a risk-free environment, please don't discount the message of steep declines in your own survey results. Please don't discount the message of teachers and staff who are coming tonight, hoping for a positive outcome to their request for more direct communication. We're lucky in Fluvana to have a school staff so confident in their knowledge and experience, and so committed to making a difference in the lives of children, that they continue to seek real influence over decisions affecting their students and their profession. Your own surveys indicate that existing opportunities for influence are not safe or effective. Please consider some new opportunities presented tonight that can improve the education of the students at Fluvana, free of charge, simply by improving the communication between staff and the school board. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to address the board? If not, first round of public comment is closed. Moving on to reports. Mr. Brezler, 2015 budget update.
Great evening. The biggest part of my update on fiscal year '15 has to do with the MUNIS implementation and the fact we're on the second day of three days of onsite training all day. I left down there. It's going really well. We're getting on. The training onsite is amazing. We're still on track for July 1st go-live date for the accounts payable budget purchasing requisition process with the payroll plan here live for like January 1st of 2016. We've been working closely with the county, and in fact, have been taking advantage of our training because all but one of their staff never went through training with the Tyler folks. They came on after the training was over, since they've been implementing for four years. So we're working. They're also helping us communicate better. As part of the plan to do MUNIS implementation was to allow easier sharing of electronic data right now. What happens is after we do our expenditure report, the county gets that and may have to manual input of that because there is no electronic connection in this facility. Continue to keep in touch with Madison and Orange as well. I have a meeting with the Charlottesville City Director of Finance and his head of the county, who's about to become the Director of Finance, to look at how they do end-of-year modeling, not only coming up, but it's got there. Mentioned it previously, the most bill that the governor signed included the budget. Came out on the 26th, and then signed on March 26th. So the governor, it took only a month between the General Assembly coming up with the budget and the governor signing, which is the shortest turnaround time in probably a decade. One of the results is, all things being equal, if we hit our AEM target, we get about $9,000 more through bits and pieces than the General Assembly did over the governor's budget. Now, it seems like where did $9,000 come from? They rounded things differently, and so when you do $19 million, a few hundred dollars here and a few hundred dollars there, it's to $20,000. On the summary report, which is out, mentions we're updating on MUNIS software continues. Mr. Stafford was able to go to the local choice regional meeting in Stanton on the 12th of March. Nobody else is able to go, tied up in MUNIS updates. Following the Board of Supervisors' adoption of a budget on the next Wednesday, I'll likely be able to go into doing the detailed budget that we've seen in the past few years. That's also being mitigated by the fact that our budget structure is going to be different under MUNIS now, so there will not be less lines. It's just the way they're numbered is going to be different, so that's just taking a conversion. Today, we changed some of our numbers because we realized there's a better way to do it. For example, we move governor's school as a separate fund, and it gets counted for differently, and move it back in. It changes some of the account codes that are used. So that's just an ongoing process. It doesn't really hinder anything, but it just sort of reduces down some of it. We have an agreement, I think it's a company called Frontier Technologies, that does a software program called ASOP. It helps manage substitutes and tracks absences. It interfaces with the MUNIS software. It's used by Madison, Al, and Moro, and Louisa, and Orange, among others in the area, to help with that. Because right now, for example, when we do a lead processing, we have an online lead system, and people enter a lead. It goes in, it goes streaming through the system, and then it comes to a stop on the payroll clerk's desk because there's not an automated interface between the two systems. This will feed others in, so the person will just spend their time manually entering. Also helps us with the area of the Affordable Care Act to manage substitutes, because if you get beyond a certain point, you're eligible for benefits, and this is a way of managing some of those processes. And again, the food service fund, it's doing positive growth. It's the highest point since Jim of 2000, the spring of 2008, so they're continuing to do well there. We're looking at cooperative purchasing options. One of them, Mr. Winkler might talk about later, as far as a capital project, but I talked with an individual in the state fuel management office, and we can ride their contract. What that does is gets us out of the business of having to get bids and be able to, why did you pick this company over that company? We use the state's contract. Those who are competitive, if they have a question about that, they ask the state. The prices, about a year and a half ago, Mr. Rodish, when the county did a study, and the state, and he looked at 21 purchases, the schools did, and it was either 17 or 19 of them, the state was as good as the prices that we got by going out and doing it. So that's just time that our staff saves to get the same financial benefit. And staff time is a really valuable resource, that money doesn't necessarily restore. So we're doing that. Hitting all could be done the same way. So we're looking at that. It's pretty much 2015. Right now, we are running high hell projection in there regarding where the AEM would be. And Dr. Matheson told me that his number was conservative as far as the AEM number being, at the time, was 35, 22, 21, 9. He tells me the number's a little higher than that, but we are still in that narrow band of being on track as opposed to falling below the projection, which we did for the past two years. We are now at least in line with the model. That's always a good thing. So we're less than two below the projection in the past, we were as many as 15 or 12. So that's good news, so that means we should finish the year on what we planned to. And so those numbers are in there, and they've been updated. The supplementals have been updated, supplemental materials, the permission is updated on the summary report as well. We've been meeting with the county on the actual numbers match exactly, and Mrs. Sello was down there this afternoon over lunch between training sessions and meeting. That's about high hell on 15.
Any questions? For 2015? Okay, 2016?
I did include a copy again of the modified page 19 from the budget document. That shows the requests of the way, but I didn't believe it last month. Please, the impact of the General Assembly's budget, as you can see, it only requests under 1.1 million. We're close to 1.2 million. So their actions to get the same thing for the buck costs even over $1,000 less. That's in there. The important dates are, obviously, once today, the meeting was moved up so the board and others could attend the public hearing today for supervisors. By law, they have to wait a week after the public hearing in a minimum in order to make a decision on the tax rate and adopting the budget. So they have a, next Wednesday is making a decision on the tax rate and adopting the budget. The important points from the FY '16 budget is adopted. Revenue to Fluvana County is lower next year to the schools than this year. It looks like it's a little higher in one regard than it could be, but they gave us $150,000 more towards the compensation adjustment to get an average raise of 1.5 percent. So it looks like we got more money, but that's one-time money to do a specific thing. It doesn't have anything to do with any of the core work we were doing, the number of students we have to care about. Point out again, the really important infusion of cash into the VRS fund, which lowers and has an ongoing impact on our ability to pay for, and improves our ability to pay for our employees' retirement because they reduce the contribution rate dramatically over the next several years. And that the, we got the approved funding to implement an average 1.5 pay raise, percent pay raise. It's an average across the standards of quality positions, which we're going to give to everybody. And under the statute, we could have put that into effect starting January 1st, the 1.5 percent, which over the course of a year is 1.75 percent. We budgeted to do it from July 1st through the end of the year, so everybody gets the full 1.5 percent over the course of the year. And that's 16. The final template that they typically come out, for some reason, hasn't come out yet for fiscal year '16. It should be out for government. There isn't a lot of pressure to do it because they're so far ahead. Usually, they're scrambling to get it done in gyms. They're done in March. I don't know if they were ready for that. Another item that's typically out this time of year, which we haven't seen, that might come out this week or next week, is there's a section of the superintendent's, the annual superintendent's report. It's called Table 15. It's the one that people like to look at because it's the comparative, and an apples-to-apples efforts of per pupil expenditures in the categories of state, federal, and local, retail sales tax. That's normally out the middle of March to the beginning of April. It hasn't come out yet, but it should be out the next couple of weeks. It's always something to look at. That'll show where we stood as a fiscal year, in the last fiscal year. We should be a little, our per pupil expenditure number should be a little higher overall because of the increase, the 1.5 billion we got from the supervisors. That plus slightly lower average, the other membership should have raised our per pupil expenditure. And it's particularly interesting looking in there because when you look at the 10, 11, and 12 school divisions, we look at in the area, where we fall, we were very low at the bottom, per pupil expenditure for the overall when you include all those four factors. But the local contribution, for example, was in the middle to upper half. So the local government is, we just have to refer him as well. Retail sales tax, we're not so good at, which is not everywhere. That's a long gap for '16.
Any questions regarding '16?
Just a clarification. When you spoke about the compensation, the 1.5 is an average. Everyone will receive a step. Everyone doesn't receive a 1.5 percent increase.
Right. It's an average of what the increase is for across the different staff positions. Some positions get higher, and some positions get lower. It's just an average. And that doesn't want people to lean on variety of skills.
And in addition, I wrote myself a note when in May, when we come back and we have had the conclusions about what our budget will look like, then we can talk about where, you know, how that impacts what we've requested. But also, we can address a few questions that have come up. One is, what are the components that comprise a, you know, per pupil expenditure? I might make sure we put that there. The other is the question about field trips and how those are funded, how we move forward. You know, we've had some questions about if there's a field trip, and we're providing the buses or the drivers, how do we calculate and, you know, who pays for what? And we could put that in our presentation about our budget as we move forward so that it's clear to the board as well.
Just a point of clarification. I just want to be sure, the $300,000 that's in here for technology replacement, that's in addition to the $600,000?
Yes. Yes. Because the $600,000 is for the wireless upgrade project. Separate in the CIP.
Is there a $600,000 every CIP brought every year?
No.
No. That's specific to the wireless upgrade project.
Just there. 2015.
And they've held stable to that.
Yeah.
It's nice to talk.
Thank you.
All right. The VSB policy services agreement?
Last year was the first year we had to do this. VSB has created a policy services agreement to silent people. Some who was, if you will, I believe are not abused because they're focused on copying their policies and taking advantage of them. VSB policies aren't copyrighted. We entered into the agreement to get this service. The value of the service is significant. There are 137 on school division 134. The rest, we already use the services. And it's involved and valuable. It was pointed out at last school board meeting that there were some strange things in our policy manual. They're not necessarily made up. For example, when you, the example was given, which is a good one, is you've got miniature horses in there, and there is service hours. Well, when you read through the details, it's in the code of federal regulations that supports the Americans with Disabilities Act. And those are things that our staff doesn't have the time or ability to do. And if we were to try and retain a lawyer on our own to do that, it would cost more than $2,500 a year to do that kind of service. Because we do not belong to the National School Boards Association. The Virginia School Boards Association focuses on what happens in the Commonwealth. They rely on NSBA to watch what the feds are doing and what's going on, and so they get that input, see how that matches in to Virginia law and our policies. So that's just a pretty good resource. Also, I'm on the phone, Ms. Kreischer calls as well to get clarifications. I know Mr. Winkler's and Ms. Keller also have called, and I know board members have called with questions on policy, and that's what we're there for. Elizabeth Ewing told me once she thinks that I'm just sort of, I just give everybody speed dial or a phone number for her work because she gets so many phone calls over there from everybody. So it's just a valuable resource, so this is the presentation. The staff recommends the agreement be approved for coming there. Any questions about the services?
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry about that. Trying to get our technology in check. Good afternoon. As always, it's a pleasure to have the opportunity to speak with you. I'm here to present an update as far as where we are with the HVAC roof renovations at the middle school. If you'll recall, a couple of years ago, we went to the county, the CIP committee went to the county with some recommendations to secure some funds for some major renovations at the middle school, primarily to include roof replacement, some renovations in the gym, and HVAC overhaul. Last year, in April, the Board of Supervisors did approve approximately $5.1 million. That figure was obtained through the facility study a couple of years prior, done by Crabtree and Orval. Right now, we have contacted, contracted with an architectural firm, FPW, and Grafer Aiden, which is the engineering part of that, to do the design work. Currently, the scope for the entire project would include, and I'm summarizing here, chiller refurbishment, ductwork, rooftop units, eight. There are 10 right now. We believe after the engineering study's been done, we can do away with two. The newer ones will be much more efficient and actually use less energy, but produce more HVAC for us. The controls, they will be online equipped right now, except for the new addition that was done several years ago at the middle school when it was the high school. Our HVAC component is not online. This will give us online capabilities right away. The air handlers, total roof replacement, which I'll outline in just a minute. As they're going in and doing the HVAC and the controls, we'll be doing ceiling tile replacement, putting new LED lighting in the classrooms, gym floor and bleachers, and then I'm hopeful that there'll be enough funds to do some renovations to the restrooms and the locker rooms. That probably won't get done until the summer of '17. We'll be looking at our funds, obviously, very closely well prior to that. Currently, we're working with a company called TCPN. That stands for the Cooperative Purchasing Network. Mr. Brezler spoke about earlier. Honestly, it's a wonderful cost-saving measure for us, but also quality, overall quality control, and the best use of our time right now. If we're trying to get this work done, started in phase one, and I'll outline the phases in just a moment, started in June, we really, time is of the essence right now. This cooperative purchasing agreement that we will have enter into with Train will allow us to expedite the process while still living up to all the RFP standards. We're guaranteed the very best pricing in industry via TCPN. One of the things that I will need from you, hopefully, would be to get signature authority to Mrs. Keller. I'm using a phase-in project right now and not to exceed $4.3 million. And if you recall, that's the figure that's been approved. About $300,000 of that $5.1 million will actually go to A&E funds. I'd like to keep some additional funding, change orders. Again, talking about the renovations that may take place later on in the restaurant. Any questions as far as the overall scope and where we are right now with that?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I asked, the bleachers, being replaced?
Yes, we would. We are planning to replace the bleachers. Yes, ma'am.
So not on the mechanism or anything?
Whatever hardware, we'll get in. We worked with a company at Carriesburg a couple of years ago for new bleachers, believe it was Penns. Whatever hardware we can reuse and the cost savings, we would incorporate that when we undertake that project. That will not be part of this cooperative purchasing agreement with Train right now, though.
Okay. And what do you do with the old bleachers? Do you recycle them?
That would be part of it. They will take down, install, and dispose of. If there's any metal in them that we might be able to sell and get back in as revenue, we would want to do that. We weren't able to save a lot with.
Are they all metal, or are they wooden?
Well, that would be the actual structure itself, the mechanism, taking them in and out. They're high-quality plastic right now. I mentioned that this week. Phase one, which will actually take place this summer, we've had several meetings with Train right now, and we're hoping, effective tomorrow, or as early as tomorrow, to enter into a turnkey package with Train. Train will handle all the chillers, all of our rooftop units, all of our variable air handlers, all of our ductwork. One company would do it all. Again, you can see what some major cost savings in that. They would also take on the role of general contractor, that's GC, excuse me. Another thing that we will pay for out of the funds would be a project manager. That person would work for you, would work for Fluvana County Public Schools. They will be on-site during the summer months when the phasing is taking place. If there's a change order that would need to take place, change, Train's general contractor or superintendent would come, talk to our project manager, he would go and look at it, authorize it, meet with me and/or Ms. Keller, and move forward with the project. Again, you have, working for us, eyes on the ground, ears on the ground at all times there while the phasing is taking place. What this would entail during phase one is the six rooftops. Just to show you what you're looking at right here, this is the old, I mean, the gym, the shoebox. This is the classrooms, the area over the media center, cafeteria, the auxiliary gym. This is the area where the art room, there are some special ed classrooms down this way, and this is currently in operations. All of these areas with a total of about 115,000 square feet will get a new roof this summer. And it'll be a rubber membrane-based roof. Currently, there's a membrane-based roof on there, but it also has the gravel cortex over top of it. We'll be removing that. We're not going back to gravel. Also taking place this summer, chiller refurbishments, that's going to take place right away. The HVAC. The HVAC work in this section, this section, and this section. These two sections right here, we're going to move furniture from here to there, and there, move furniture from here to there. Lots of furniture to be moved, it'll be a lot of work, custodial work has to take place this summer. We believe we have the time to do this. Also taking place in these areas, new lights. I am pleased to say that, talking with Train, we are getting new lights in the shoebox, as well as ceiling grids in all the classroom areas. Questions about the first phase of the project?
How did you just spot on Train?
Uh, they were part of the purchasing agreement. We were introduced to this several months ago, just various things that we buy and purchase. We looked on them, they have a great reputation. They currently are doing our chillers, are handling our chillers. We could have gone with Siemens, I don't think they're a part of it, but just an organization, I'm just going out the name. Lennox, Carrier, um, it, it was just a company that's been highly recommended. We went out and did a little bit of research. They've worked with school systems around the state, as well as many other organizations. So far, they've been wonderful. I don't know if Will, Will's right back here, Will lead us with Train, they've been wonderful so far. Been very responsive to all their questions. And they've given us a really good price, as of right now. Looking at other project phase ends, this would be phase two in the summer of 2016. Again, HVAC work in C, D, and F. Cafeteria tables, we can, we're thinking we can slide out into the hallways. Also hoping to put, get the floor in depth at a point. There'll be some classroom, um, a little bit of office material in here that we're hoping to get in the section E. Ceiling grids, looking at HVAC online, services comes September of 16. New floor bleachers in the competition gym. Again, those have not been bid out. When we put the floor in, at Carriesbrook, I worked with a company called Performance Flooring. We're currently researching to see if there's anybody part of this cooperative purchasing agreement to get our best price. Again, they crunch their numbers, get the numbers as low as they can, and then they go through the grinder and the purchasing network. So, it, it will, it's, it's a big advantage for us as far as the school system goes. And then phasing out into phase three into the summer of 2017, looking at doing some renovations in the restroom and the locker room. Questions about this project? Done? I did that.
So what you will need from the board is approval for Mrs. Keller to sign off up to what you're asking is $4.3 million?
Yes, yes, yes. That, that gives us roughly an $800,000 cushion. Again, $300,000 of that has already been committed via the county for, through the AMA firms for the plans and scope and specs for all the work. I hope we can save some additional money. I would, I would come back all along the way, obviously, but that right there would not be part of what I'm asking for as far as assignments. Everything else in phase one and phase two, change orders, you'd be given her ultimate signature authority. Any other questions? Thank you for your time, thank you.
Perkins Plan, Local Plan and Budget Update.
Usually I blame the late time and if I say something stupid now... I guess it's back Mr. Winkler. So in your packet you have the Local Plan and Budget Update for CTE. It's, um, called the Perkins Plan. These are the federal dollars we get to help support our Perkins programs and all of our CTE programs. The grant itself is pretty much the same as it's been in the past. I don't think there's any substantial changes to it. I will say that, um, last year at this time, we had a couple of the annual objectives that we had not met. And now the CTE program has met all of the annual targets. So they're similar to what we use for AYP for the academic side. There are similar objectives for the CTE side of things, so I'm really excited about that. I think at our last meeting that Ms. Carr was at, it was really exciting to hear our teachers talk about all of the opportunities that our students are engaged in. We have students that are getting hired immediately upon completing programs and sometimes before that. So it's just, it really seems to be taken off in Leavanda. And three of our, we wrote up three descriptions for the VSA showcases for success that involve CTE, and all of them were included in their booklet, and we were invited to submit proposals to present in the summer conference. CTEs have been exciting to them. But I'll answer any questions you might have about that.
Ms. Keller.
Yes.
Maybe they know, I'm not real familiar with what the Perkins Plan is. Can you tell me what it is?
Sure. It's, so the federal government allocates funds for career and technical education. And Perkins is the name of the funds that we receive from the, the federal government. They're funneled through the State Department. We receive, this year it'll be somewhere around $40,000 from the state. Obviously, it doesn't fund everything that we're doing, but it, it helps to offset some of our costs. Most of the funds are for equipment purchases, so things that we might need in the classrooms to run the programs, and then some costs for professional development, those sorts of things. There's lots of requirements because they're federal dollars, and so that's why you've got the really long document that speaks to how you're complying with all the different regulations.
So obviously with the order passing, it's not there?
No, it's only for career tech ed. And we typically have a, a process in place where teachers would request items that they might need in their classrooms, and then we entirely develop a plan. So that's part of what this is. So, um, for example, some of the things we're including in this plan is updating the TV production computers. We're also looking to purchase, um, I don't know what to call it, a growing cabinet for Mr. Russell, Russell Jennings' classroom in agriculture. And a broiler for our culinary arts classroom. So those are some of the big items that we're looking at doing next year.
Is, are any of these funds paying for the testing? Because I know that's a, that's a big expense as well.
Oh, part of them, it's a little complicated. There are actually three pots of money that help to pay for industry credentialing. There's one called Workplace Writing Miss Funds, and there's another called CTE credentialing funds. And then what we do is, what we have that is over the top of those funds, we embed into the Perkins Plan. CTE testing costs us, uh, costs us in terms of grant money about $7,000 each year. I would say that that's probably the thing, um, when I look at those, those are areas where I would say we're generating future taxpayers. All of our kids that completed the nurse aid, the Certified Nurse Aid Exam for the State Board of Nursing, many of them got jobs immediately. And, um, the, um, some of the local facilities have come to the classroom recruiting students to come and work for them now. So, um, it's, I feel like it's, it pays for itself.
Are those jobs in nursing homes?
Yes. Or assisted living.
And equipment is needed to be purchased for hospitality department? I thought that was pretty well-equipped, wouldn't you?
Some of the, the, obviously the basic things are there, but she kind of has ongoing sorts of needs as she goes throughout. Like, it might be things like a, a bookcase or something that she might need to hold, um, different equipment that she has. So it's, it's kind of ongoing. You know, she, as she works through the process, she's kind of identifying what her needs are. It's, a lot of what we've spent money on this year too has been that, you know, she has to keep the area clean. And so what she has to use to, to help the kids learn sanitary procedures in the salon, stuff like that. Things that you wouldn't really necessarily think of immediately. It's embedded in the cost of that program.
Any other questions?
I just want to comment that any time I see a document like this that's 23,000, kind of never paid, you could probably tell me. It's, it's amazing. My mind, my thoughts is over, so thank you for putting the effort in. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Special Education Annual Plan, Ms. Lee.
This is going to be the first review of Special Education Annual Plan. It doesn't change our plan also, it doesn't change much in terms of federal dollars from last year for allocation. We did get a slight increase this year after our first increase. Last year we got about $736,000 for our 619 plan. And we got about $19 for the 611, which is for our early childhood special education programs. This year for that, we have $18,000 for the early childhood and for our 619. In your packet you see that amount being $1724,000. So those...
We don't have it, anything. It's not in the packet.
I think it was entered on Monday and then not when it was up there. Is this an annual plan for just Leavanda County schools or are you submitting this elsewhere?
Yes, so I'm waiting for it. It's annual plan that we get for federal dollars every year, so every locality gets a certain amount of it. So last year, like I said, ours was $736,000, roughly a little bit of a difference there. And this year it's $724,000. And we use that for the special education programs and for staffing in the family. We have been fortunate in the past two years to be able to allocate some of that aside from just staffing and put some of that to the classrooms for supplies.
And there is also kind of positions?
The special education positions. Yes, Ms. Keller? I'm assuming it's a, it's a drop box. The positions are based on the special education percentages we've got for your students. Ziva's out of, I guess your SOQ is going to be based on your students' special ed and the disability type of thing.
And I want to change the page, I'm sorry. Looks like the cover page is what went over.
Ms. Lee.
Yes.
I really enjoyed the children last month coming here, seeing them, I'm sorry, but seeing them all.
Good, thank you, they enjoyed being here. This is our first review, you said we need us to take action next month?
Yes, it's, um, due to be submitted to VDOE on May 15th, so next month will be, it'll be an action item. This is just for the first review. Now it says Ziva's.
Yes.
Got it. That's a pretty quick, got it.
It's like 20 pages, right?
Yeah, 26 pages, yes. So I'm on page 13, first page that I'm speaking from now, which is the budget. And again, this is just a projection. We look at it as a change in just staffing, as our needs for special education, as population goes up or down. It's really good that we're getting more students, we're getting, at least, got two this week, potentially five more students coming in. So it's going to change, you can't change your needs for staffing for the entire budget, it's a change depending on what you have in your school. So as you can see, most of it right now is in personnel and employee benefits. Some of it is in materials and supplies and purchase services. The allotment for the, like I said, the 611 is a partial salary. It's only $18,000, uh, only, but it's not enough to cover our salary, so that's a partial salary there for early childhood teachers. Sorry, yeah, I mixed that. You got any questions about that?
Do you have any special technology needs for these children?
Yes, ma'am. And it really fluctuates based on, it can change from day to day. A student comes in and needs a $20,000 device, like an FM system, we had to purchase this school year for someone that we have a hearing issue or a vision issue. We're really trying to accommodate and keep the kids here in the county as much as we can. So some of those needs are very expensive when your child comes in. This young child came in this week, he's going to need some assist, assistive technology, just to help communicate, so. They were on page 13. Think I was over the figures that we just went over?
Yes, that's, um, it's actually, I think it's 20.
It's 23, I can't remember.
21, 22.
So those are the boundaries, it's on. And again, we'll continue to adjust that until the deadline and final allocation or the final grant pool. We have to adjust it in August, September, when DOB finally releases the final amount that you had. Usually that amount doesn't change much, but you change your final budget in August, September.
Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
It's great work that you're doing.
Thank you.
National Diploma Issue by the Nantucket Public Schools, Ms. Keller.
Yes, I've included a letter that I would like to submit to Susan Ernance, Regional Program Manager. It mirrors what other school divisions are doing related to offering a Leavanda County High School diploma to students, actually adults, who would complete the national diploma. That's actually really, it's, it's very new. The diploma can all, it's called the National External Diploma Program. It's only available to, um, to someone who's left the school division, they're, they are, have to be residents of Leavanda, and they have to be 25 years or older. That age was set not to impice maybe a younger person to believe that they could leave the school system and then go into a program like this. So really, um, these particular students would still work through our, our adult end programs. And we would work, again, continue to work with the region with budget, et cetera. So, but we would be authorized with the board's approval to issue a diploma once they had completed that program. We don't, um, we don't create the guidelines for that program nor the, you know, the curriculum or anything. But once I get more information, I've only briefly looked at it, actually with this case, would be glad to even give you more information about what that entails to get that. Charlottesville City is already on board, I know that Almar's looking at doing the same. But again, we would only do this for residents of Leavanda.
How does this relate to the GED program, or is that something that's outlawed at this time?
It's, um, it relates in, in that it's another opportunity, it's an, it's an alternate route for an opportunity for a high school diploma. GED, the, um, there are a couple of levels. ISAP is the GED program. ISAP is the G E D program for students who have not yet reached an adult age, so seventeen typically. We typically have very few students who go through that program and complete that program. The G E D, the adult G E D, which I know we've spoken of before, has become a much more rigorous test and even just a more rigorous program, and even more costly. Although we do have adults who are in that program, sometimes we will have students who are approaching the age of eighteen, maybe they are an older, a student who has, an older student with low amount of credits, and so we can offer them to go into an adult program. That happens once, rarely I would say, but once in a while when it seems to be in the best interest of the student. The national, what I like about the National External Diploma Program and is that it looks to be more, I don't want to say hands-on, applicable, it looks, it's to be reasonable in terms of workforce skills and understanding workforce readiness and that kind of thing. I think there's a lot of political discussions on the whole G E D program and around, we've seen some changes over the years. I think there's maybe even a little bit of a willingness to phase some of those opportunities out and replace it with something that's a bit more applicable to that particular population. But the G E D itself has become a tougher test, more expensive test than a tougher test to pass. Do you think I should add anything to that, Ms. Gilliam, that you know of, any changes?
I think this is really designed for, sometimes we have kids that leave school with just one or two credits left. And so it's kind of designed to help them get a diploma, which is certainly more valuable depending on what you're pursuing than the G E D might be.
Right, right, it's just another, an alternate opportunity, and it's, and really for special, particular, unique set of people who found themselves in a place where they don't have it, you know, did not get their diploma.
Well, does that actually enable them to get into college if they choose to?
Give them a diploma, yes.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. The S B A Business Honor Roll and the Levanna County Business Honor Roll. So each year, the school board, working along with the administration and the staff within each building, will recognize businesses who have contributed and played a vital role in how we function as a school division. And each year we try to give the S B A more than what they ask for. And they say that we need to do that within our own way of kind of recognizing those local businesses within the county. So in your packet you have those documents there and with listings of each business who we would like to honor, who have played a vital role in supporting what we try to do. So is there anything else you want to add to that?
Just that I like that we will, from here on out, have the Levanna County Public Schools Business Honor Roll, where we can add to that, and then of course we would still submit to the Virginia School Association, businesses and entities that have helped us.
Okay, great. The comments are moving on the Business Honor Roll. Strategic planning, Mr. Matheson?
So this continues to be a conversation among the board and even last night at our, the S B A Spring Regional Forum, some of the information that we received as a region of board members had lots of good information, really kind of made us think, and the speakers last night spoke a lot about having schools in challenging environments. And really what the region tried to do was show that even if we don't have schools that meet that criteria of a challenging environment, there's always great takeaways for all of us within the Commonwealth as board members to really look at how we are making decisions, what that looks like and how that is conveyed out to the public, and kind of what, what drives our domains and our successes and what we look at. So I asked Mr. Matheson to come and speak a little bit about our strategic planning that we've done. And Ms. Keller and I have spoken and starting to work on some things. And as we move forward and try to get a little bit more of that firmed up, then we'll bring some information back to the board to start looking at strategic planning and priorities. Mr. Matheson?
Okay, well, I'm going to be fairly quick, I just want to give you an idea of where we are. It feels like we've been working on this for three years.
Yeah.
And it was kind of exciting when we actually, when Ms. Keller pushed it back in the direction and said, let's try to take the next step with this part of it. It really has been three years that we've been taking this step, and we have all the parts, but we really don't have that place where we're able to reflect back on it. And our documentation doesn't necessarily meet some of the needs that we know that we have, you know, i.e. we have strategic priorities now, the things that you vote on, do they actually fall under those strategic places or not? The website is a great place for finding all the information, but there's no reflection there, and there's no real measurement key there. So it's a great place to send people to, but you really don't, you know, you're just getting the information, there's nothing else with it. So the hope was that we'd be able to do a couple of things. The purpose of it was to, one, to try to reinforce what we know about what works for school boards. That was presentations that were at the, I think it was Bath, I don't know where it was, where it started. And it sort of ties into our schools of improvement, those things we've done. And we want to create a link between action or inaction and strategic priorities. Everything that we do, we want to link it back. So we have to start getting ourselves to do that in some way, in a format. And then the end hope is to provide a more open forum for reflection and connection, so that people can start to see some of these connections. I think we see the connections because we're, we're in it, and we're in those seminars, and we're doing all those parts. But nowhere is it really brought back together. So the hope would be that the direction we're headed with here will let us to do that. So what we did was originally started in, you know, all these wonderful things in terms of creating a website, doing whatever. And one of the big pushes here through Ed Tech, and Ms. Hartwell here at I T R T is starting to use like the Google Apps, Google Sites, Google Classroom. We have all those capabilities and we're only really touching the surface. So it seems like the logical next step is for us to use that for ourselves and to use that as a good of a school board. So what I'm going to try to show you quickly is a-
It's a beginning.
It's a beginning stages and steps that we're going to take. And there's going to be a lot more dialogue on it, obviously, and so what you're going to see is, might not always work when I click on things, okay? The hope is eventually, right here, we already have the place where we talk about our strategic priorities. We would want, we would want to add a link here for anybody on the outside that wants to be able to go and look at where we are. We already have Apps accounts, and so our Apps accounts and getting to it are a little bit different. And the training part of this and getting up and going, that's something, and we've been working, starting in the schools with that, we'll be working with the school board as well, so that we all start to become more comfortable with that. So let's see if I can figure out what comes up next. So when we go in, when we go into email, there's a little button up over here on the side. And when you click on that, it lets you do all kinds of things. And a lot of times, I mean, like me, I don't ever click on it because I'm going to go to my email. So now all of a sudden I have to start using these site things, and so you'd be just clicking on sites. When you click on sites, it opens this box. If we have something shared with it, we would be able to pull up through, and it would then, that link is actually a webpage. Okay, so it's an actual site. The list down below here, and I'm sorry it doesn't project really nicely, but that, right there, that's that document, the model of things that school boards need to take into consideration. Those are the eight areas that we want to make sure that we're addressing. And so this is what we're going to reflect back to, okay? So that's one way to look at that. And that'll get cleaned up a little bit, and I think we can do things like you could hover over parts of it and actually get the definition and those types of things for it. But the really important part for us is to say, if I'm going to go back in here and get where I need to be, is saying basically that if we want to look at, for example, the action items that you guys do every meeting that we have to do it, we don't ever reflect back really to this part of it, the vision, that's like these different parts of it. So if we were to do that, what would that look like? If we click on one of those buttons? Oh gracious. See, I told you. Don't buck out. Go back in. I was just on it, so I know it works. Oh, it's not going. So.
You signed in?
I was signed in.
At the top.
All right, we'll try that again. I wouldn't know all that secrets, huh?
While you sign in, one of the things that we were discussing is that there are lots of components. And if you think about someone from the outside looking in and trying to find it, they're having to go to lots of places. Because you have continuous improvement plans, you have actions from the school board, you have initiatives, et cetera. We, our, our huge job, which is extremely doable, and this is where Dr. Matheson came in, is to, how do we get all of those things together and then constantly have it, I mean, in one place, so that there's a way to say, this is an action item taken by the board, or this is an initiative through curriculum instruction, or this happened through a project team, and how does it always go back to support the strategic priorities? You know, what's it related to? And then how do we measure them? The continuous improvement plans, for example, are huge documents, but for someone to go find that and know that it's connected, it's hard. And there are lots of models and ways to do this, but this is the one that we started back-
So these tabs, obviously these would change as we see needs. Right now this is just me making it up and branding, whispering here, it'd be really nice if this had a place for it. What happens very quickly if you're not careful, this just becomes another website. And that's what we don't want to happen, because then we have it in multiple places. This has to show something. So for example, the action item, what I was talking about, when you click on it, it opens up. The cool thing is that's directly linked to my Dropbox. And so if I put anything in that Dropbox, it shows up. So if anything that I want to have in there, I can have in there. One piece of this is going to be taking documents that we currently have, for example, and say, okay, let's add a piece that says we had a certain action, the budget proposal, what you would expect it to hit all of them. Right, because the budget is going to. But as you work your way down, school calendar, what areas is it addressing in terms of strategic priorities? And all those key work that school boards do, so that we can start to get an idea of where it's being impacted, and where we'd expect to see a change in this. And I would suspect that a lot of this piece over here, this strategic priority piece, would be sort of like the cover piece to our parts that we do for, let's see if I can go backwards in this, of any of the documentation that we have. So for the, for the, I open up and make tabs to be tell. So when each one, when we click on these things, like committees, for example, they would have that piece that they would need to fill out when they have their meeting minutes and they're doing them. What's, because we really want people reflecting back to what's important in what we're doing and see where it is. So we would be able to keep our committee information in there, if it's under project teams, advisory, school board, elected committees, which are some of the things that you all do, that other than we might hear you talk about it, there might be documentation that we could put in here that could show that you're fostering relationships and partnerships in those different pieces.
So you're talking about both agendas and then for summaries?
And then any action items or the action report? The action report, and then even for follow-ups. I mean, I think that this is a good way to start, and I think it not only enhances communication, I think it's a good way for us to make sure it's just not haphazard action that we're doing.
And it certainly gives some evidence as to what we actually do, when we're not sitting here.
Right, 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 right.
Definitely a working document, like I said, I think as we see the use of it, we'll kind of add things in and we'll see some things that maybe we think right now that we aren't really going to do it. But I think this is really the action step now to the strategic priorities. It's the next action step that we need to take in our three years is to say, okay, you know, we feel like we have everything pretty well documented, now we have to start looking at, say, are we actually having an impact now? You know, we always talk about, we've got to go back around and ask that question. This is going to allow us to start to do that. And then also the nice thing is by opening it up, you can also, depending on the comfort level, this can be a place where you can provide reflection and have questions and those types of things. And it can be done in a little more, you know, safer area where you can kind of manage it a little bit and respond to it. So there's lots of neat things you can do with it, but we're right ready. I think we're hoping that in August, we have this up and going, and then in training and those types of things. And then we just have to start looking at a lot of our documentation that we have and saying, okay, this is what we think is important, what you think we need to be able to move forward. We need to embed it in our documents and what we're doing. And then we need to start measuring it, must collect them up at the end of the day. Because I do think it would be interesting to sit down at the end of the year and see how many things have we actually done to foster partnerships? Or there's, we talked a little bit about this earlier, sometimes the things that you have to do are negative in different areas. That's okay, we just have to know that it's actually impacting that area, and that way people can have that. Not only if it's not, it's not sort of like done behind closed doors or anything like that, it's right out there and there it is.
What do you intend for continuous improvement?
We have, you know, our, this is, that's a great question. We have our continuous improvement plans that the schools are doing, and we've gotten better at it. And this is really our second year of doing that, we're bringing in a lot more of the different program areas. Right now, those really aren't available as like a public document, because it's sort of in that process. We want that out there, you know, there's no reason for people not to see what our principals and our staff and the schools feel that they need to move forward and how they're going to measure themselves for it. And that continuous improvement plan is provided.
It's what was presented in October during the seminar?
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
It's, yeah. The percentage of focus there.
And this is available, will be available to both teachers and the-
Community.
And community.
Yes.
Once we open up, and I, you can lock it now, it's locked, but right now I had it locked down, and I just got back in there. So it said it was open to the world, I don't know how it happened. If you've worked in Google Sites, I now, well, I heard, I'm surprised because of my hair she has, because it's difficult. It's really finicky, but once it works, once you get it going, it's terrific. And it is something that we're asking our teachers to start using some of these new things. And this means like we should use the resources we have, it's definitely a resource for us and something that will let us get it out there a little bit more.
And each year when we, when we open school and we have, you know, conversation and then we have meetings at each school site, there's always a time to talk about curriculum updates and alignment and where, you know, where we're headed. And when that comes, if, say, Ms. Gilliam and Mr. Striplin are meeting with the Kerry's book staff, they're always mindful of, here's Levanna's mission, vision, the strategic priorities. But I think this is even, this strengthens it because, again, it's public document, but it also is one place that hosts all the work that is associated with it. And it's even a way to jumpstart your year, and be able to say, let's look at this together. There are lots of things, I mean, I still continue to be pleasantly surprised that there will be things that would happen maybe at the high school. And I'm like, I didn't even know they were doing that, that's really awesome. And, but it's not articulated, doesn't mean people aren't doing it. But like you said, you don't want haphazard excellent things. You want excellent things, but to bring them together and show how they support the vision. But again, where are we going in three years? And what does that look like in terms of budget planning? I like, I like that we have, we would have it in one place, because that's, that's huge.
So it's focused acts?
Yes.
You've been talking about for two years now, right? That's really what this is, is saying now, we're doing these things on purpose, so-
Let's put it together.
Get it out there and put all the parts together and make it better. Any other questions?
Good, that's great. So, thank you. F E A liaison, Mr. Rittenhouse?
Yes, as of last month's meeting, you know, I thought it was perfect timing to present for a staff liaison to set up or work just like student liaison would, you know, this obviously is not a Lexus, but I would like to suggest that the school board have a non-voting staff liaison to represent their opinions and concerns. In much ways, the same way that the student liaison does, the staff liaison would offer their views, updates and opinions. However, unlike the student liaison, the staff- However, unlike the student liaison, the staff representative should be elected by the staff, not chosen or appointed by the administration. If, as stated in the Fluvana County Public School Policy Manual, the reason for a student liaison is because the opinions and concerns of the student in the Fluvana County School Division are important to the Fluvana County School Board, then the same should hold true for the staff of our school division. If we want to remain transparent, fair, and truly care for every member of our staff, we will give them the voice for which they have continually asked. It has been said that the BSBA does not promote a staff liaison, but that really is non-relevant to this. We can decide our own decisions. We are an elected board. The BSBA is a voluntary organization. We answer to the people, not an organization. Therefore, I would like to make the following motion. That the opinions and concerns of the teachers and staff of Fluvana County School Board, School Division are important to the Fluvana County School Board. Therefore, the school board shall establish a staff liaison elected by Fluvana County Public School employees. The staff liaison shall serve in an advisory capacity and shall not vote. The school division shall supply the meeting agenda and other public materials to the staff liaison in advance of each open meeting, just like is done with student liaison. The staff liaison shall not have access to confidential information, including student or personnel records. The staff liaison is expected to attend all regular meetings and open meetings and complete assignments for research and data collection when requested by the school board.
So, conversation? Comments from other school board members? Well, I guess my threshold question would be that what, everything that you've described, I see being currently addressed in a number of different ways, in a large number of ways, where teachers have, staff has access to providing their opinion through public comment, through participation in committees, through direct access to the board, whenever they choose to pick up the phone or send an email, or to the superintendent, or their staff. So I don't see the need for an additional layer of input. What would you do to adjust that? And explain away the other things?
They could present their concerns in public instead of just on email or on phone, other than the three minutes that they're given right here in the meetings. I would like to see the input on a monthly basis. You know, I've asked for that before, you know, for staff advisory.
I think one of the things that we as a board need to think about is that we do have some governance that, and laws that we have to abide by as well. And there are specific codes that speak to why student liaisons are allowed. And that any other group or organization that's represented, then we become engaged in a partnership or an agreement. And the code specifically states that, in Virginia, that those things are not allowed. And I mean, when you sent the information and you wanted it, you know, I mean, we've talked about it, you know, several times. And one of the things that I then started to do was do some research in looking at Virginia codes, looking at what other states are doing, you know, looking at what the SBA's attorney and policy advisors have to say about that, what our attorney has to say about that. And there are some cases out there where it's prohibited that Virginia governing school boards get into a partnership or a relationship where there is a representative, excuse me, a representative of someone other than a student. And the code is very specific about why students are allowed and how they are allowed to be a part of, of school boards. And what that whole process looks like of even putting, having a student liaison sit at the table with the board. So, I mean, I think that, you know, I think it's a good time for us to, again, have that conversation and kind of look at, you know, the pros that you brought up of why you feel that that person needs to sit at the table. But I think we need to be very careful about our governing roles and responsibilities and what Virginia code says. And what, and even what an email from our, our board attorney said about it and pointing out specific cases. So. Mr. Preslauer, you deal a lot with policies and speak to Ms. Ewing. And I actually spoke to Ms. Ewing myself and had information sent from Craig Wood about this. Yes, please, if you would.
Good evening again. In talking with Elizabeth Ewing, one of the first things I mentioned is the fact that it's a BSBA policy which incorporates the Code of Virginia on a student, student, school board representative. And I explained to her that I don't think the term liaison is appropriate because it's not used in the act. She agrees that part of the policy has been neglected. So there's, there were two different points that Ms. Washington was alluding to related to this issue. There's the BSBA discussion on policy and the Code of Virginia, and some other things that lie underneath. And the state made it very specific and singling out the fact that there could be a student school board number or representative. That's important because the fact that the state said you can have a student school board representative would seem to imply, and the courts generally view this, because I'll get to the next part, that if the state says you can do that and the school board had the authority to do that anyway, they wouldn't have had to say it. Since the state specifically said that, the implication is, under Virginia code and case law, the school board doesn't have the authority to decide because it's, that's one interpretation. There's something also called the Dillon Rule, which is, Judge Dillon was a famous judge from the state of Iowa. And what basically says, if the state doesn't say municipality can do it, municipality or local governing body or entity doesn't have the authority to do it. And that's been cited in a number of cases. I have copies of them from county websites where they explain that the General Assembly didn't say we can do such and such a thing, so the board supervisors for example doesn't make a difference. That's the essence of what the SBA is saying. They have the, the General Assembly hasn't said you can do certain things. You can't put an employee on the board. You can't put additional members on from a district or something like that. The board is established under the election laws and the chart and the Code of Virginia.
And what I, what I read and what Ms. Ewing also confirmed and Craig Wood also confirmed is that you can't have a representative of employees.
Because in the case law there, that's true. What happens is, by having an employee representative, the school board has recognized employees as a bargaining unit. And under labor law, a bargaining unit is a union. Virginia is not a human state. The school board doesn't have the legal authority to recognize a bargaining unit. So that was Mr., that was Mr. Wood's point of view based on the case law in Virginia. So those are the two points on this issue, which hopefully I just reiterated what Ms. Washington had. Say those are the two points, both of them looking at it differently but getting to the same conclusion based on, on the Code of Virginia. Mr. Wood looked at it and looked in this direction. Ms. Ewing and the School Boards Association looked at it differently. But got to the same conclusion. Now, you can have a liaison. You cannot have a liaison that sits at the table. You can have a liaison that sits in the audience. Because a final point that Mr. Wood made that was part of the case and other case law is that, is that the employees can't have greater access than the public. Because you are first and foremost a public official. You happen to have employees that work under the superintendent. So the short answer is, you give, you give someone greater access to a public official than the general public. And that was part of that decision as well. So that's a third point in this, we can try and.
And there were, there was a couple other cases that actually looked at where, I mean, this has been conversation in not only Virginia, but in other states as well. And there was actually one school division, I can't remember if it was, it was a southern state. I can't remember if it was South Carolina or Georgia. But one of them actually talked about putting other members on the board that represented. So they wanted to actually have a representative of teachers. Then they also wanted to have a representative of what they call classified support staff. And so there's, there's lots of case law out there. I mean, several pages in depth. I mean, you do, you're an attorney, you know about how case is. And I mean, you really have to dig in the weeds sometimes to really find out. And so once I started reading some of these 12, 20-page documents, I thought that, am I reading this correctly or do I need to get further clarification? And that's when Ms. Ewing and Craig Wood said, you know, you're absolutely right because of Virginia. This, this is the way it is. We have no more power than the General Assembly gives us and it's very Virginia State code oriented and this is the way it is.
Has it not been a policy of persons wish to present to the board other than three minutes? That they ask to be on the agenda and they become a delegate of that? Well, it's, to me, it's not saying that if you have something you really want to make to the board, you have to ask to get on the agenda and present it, you know, rather than to. I think the three-minute policy has been a policy, it would go weird, but I, I don't see it. I personally don't feel that we have rejected any, any presentations from. Anyone that really wants to make a presentation. I think it's just when you come into the field, the concept of which you bring in. I just wonder, is it, I think you did say that there are no other, do you know any other areas that we have to teach you on in school?
Not in Virginia.
That's just something big problem.
From the research I've done, I felt strongly we had the law and the statutes behind us in terms of this particular thing. But I think what further confirms that, with the point I was making before, is that, excuse me, from the surveys results and from a lot of the discussion, there's been this kind of assumption that what we have in place right now needs to be superseded completely. That needs to basically be replaced because it's somehow not working. And I would have a real issue with that because I think it is working. I think we have a process in place with board, with the way the meetings are run. We have a process put in place by the superintendent, we have committees in place. We have plenty of ways for access. I do agree that the three-minute limitation could be limited to perhaps the bigger message that needs to be gotten across. And I believe that the way that we run our meeting could become a delegation. That's the process that we have in place. But I think it's very slippery slope to start, considering you're going to look at this group and then what about this group, and then what about this group? I think the fact that we have student representation is a real strength. I think it's important because they are people that we really are here to serve. And I think that it's a good lesson for them to have seen in our table. I think that the process that we have in place is something that we should continue to work on and improve and to work within that process and within the structure that we have to move forward.
So is that it?
Any other questions or anything Mr. Preslauer can add for more? Any other conversations or discussions?
Well, y'all just said you love hearing what the student body has to say. I love that you hear what the staff has to say, teachers actually in the classroom. This really is the best way for me to hear right here in these meetings.
And I agree. I think, you know, we do need to hear from them. And I think it's important for us to say publicly that if there is more of a discussion that needs to happen and they so desire for a presentation, then they submit the request to come as a delegation and to come speak at public comment for us to hear from them. I don't think that any of us have ever said we don't want to hear from them. It's my personal opinion.
Reports from the superintendent.
Actually, we, yeah. Under Flicko, I've been surprised, Mr. Jason Lee, has a presentation, has several students with him. I think we see four of the best dressed in the house. Two happened to be mine, sorry.
Good evening. And thank you for this opportunity. I want to present three of our members of YEA, Youth Empowerment Alliance, Nick Washington, Chris Washington, and Jason Lee. They've done a lot of work this year to afford themselves opportunities and others in the school opportunities. So I'm glad to lend those young men to you. And we'll discuss Youth Empowerment Alliance. Pretty much it was a vision of the students. And coincidentally, I was, you know, motivated to make a change. And I was, I was sitting in my living room one day on a Saturday and my son, he texted me, he was upstairs. And he said, and he said, you know, some of my friends, you know, we want to put together an organization, you know, just to improve and mentor some of the students in our school and give ourselves some opportunities. And I was like, coincidentally, I was thinking about the same thing at the same time. So I was like, this is a must-do situation. So I told them, okay, Monday, let's assemble some guys. And we started from there and we hit the ground running. And here we are, and here we are right now. So again, Youth Empowerment Alliance is exactly what the title says. We have a group of youth and we try to empower ourselves and try to empower others that are in the school. Mission, statement, this motivational group and service group is designed to serve as a system of support for high school males, including both high achievers and at-risk students. This group will build self-esteem, improve academic achievement, and promote social awareness through participation in this program. Our young males will be given proactive strategies rather than immediate ones to enhance their self-esteem. The overall goal of this program is to empower students in order to bridge the achievement gap and help guide each and every student toward achieving their life goal. And again, we call ourselves more of a motivational and service group because we like to service other students in the building, service the community, service ourselves and motivate ourselves. and motivate ourselves. Our purpose is to support young high school males to build self-esteem, to improve academic achievement, to promote social and cultural awareness, and develop, to develop certain Keys to our success, we want, we want to do everything in excellence. That's at the top, so pursuit of excellence academically, behaviorally, and in everything we do, every event that we do, we want to do it in excellence. We, we did a car wash, several car washes in Dodge Crossroads, we'll be doing some more in the spring. And the people were surprised about the way we were detailing the cars, and we really took pride in detailing the cars like they were our own cars. We had water for the people, the customers that come, we had seats for them to sit down while they were getting their cars detailed. So, we did it in excellence, so that, you know, the next time people saw us out, that they would say, hey, you know, let's go by and, you know, support this group. Again, making good choices is, is another key, and it's another key that we, we emphasize on as, as a group, recognizing and seeking and taking advantage of opportunities. This was, was one that was really surprising to me. Our first trip, we went to Virginia State University, and I take like 20 gears down. And so, we get in this gym, and there's all these different schools, academic schools there with, with the, the deans of those schools. And so, my kids just get there, and they go, they sit down. And it was like all these opportunities that were, that was there in front of them. And I'm like, you guys don't recognize that that's an opportunity, and how to take advantage of it. So, we went over, guided them, and, you know, then they got up and they, you know, went around, and they took advantage of the opportunities that were there. So, we worked on seeking those opportunities and recognizing and taking advantage of those opportunities as well. And that's very important for those young men. What inspired me was looking at the numbers and some of the expectations that, that are for some of our students, as we look at some of the expected measurable objectives for both English and math, and that's from DOE. We saw the 64% for black students, 62 in math, 64 in English. And, you know, as, as a school as a whole, I mean, that's, the expectation or just normal is not acceptable for us. I mean, it's just, just kind of from, from our leader in the building, it's just not acceptable. So, that was an inspirational situation there as well, because we have a lot of great young kids, I mean, a lot of. And just for us to expect average or whatever the expectations are is not acceptable for us. So, that inspired me personally to take a vested interest in, in to take these young men to the next step. Again, I learned early in my educational career, higher expectations, you know, higher results. I can remember as a first-year driver's ed teacher, I would give tests, I'm like, it's driver's ed, it's supposed to be easy. I'm going to give them the test, I'm going to give them all the answers, I'm going to give them an open note test, open book test, and the results were like terrible. I mean, more kids failed because the expectation was low. And I realized if, you know, if I had high expectations, and look, you got a study, we have the test, the results, I mean, it, it went through the roof. So, currently, only 10 of our approximate 80 black males have a 3.0 GPA or better cumulative, which is about 12.5%. And we're working on that. I kind of realized that as I was trying to get some of my students to participate in some outside community organizations where our standard was a 3.0, that we didn't have many. But as you can see, we've been tracking something, grazing, we keep a pressure on these young men. During third night, which was our last night, we had 114 of the 117 kids that are currently participating in YEA, 97%, they had passed in grades in all the classes. So, I was like, 117 classes, coming in free sessions, and we take time, we, I, I meet with them every Thursday morning. Sometimes I call them out of class if none of the teachers don't like it much, and I try to keep it number. And, but we'll go over, and I say, look, here's your grades. I pass them all out, you know, and I'm like, this is what you're doing, good job, pat yourself on the back, here's where we want to go. And they do a great job keeping them, keeping themselves in order and line and motivating themselves. That's an important piece as well. A lot of activities we do just builds that, that bond and motive, so that they can, you know, they, they always with each other, and they always motivating each other. So, just a little bit about us, all male, all male students are encouraged to join. All students are encouraged to participate in YEA sponsored activities during the year. And you'll see some of the photos, we take anybody, we go to college tours, it's like, we're just doing the work to try to give ourselves the opportunity to go. And if you want to go with us, we self-fund our trips, come right along for more than merit. 37.5% of our black males in the high school actively participate in the youth empowerment alliance. We've taken a few college tours, we went to Virginia State to Open House in the fall. We went to Lawwood for Diversity Day in the winter. While we were there, we went to the Robert Russo Morton Museum, which was a good experience for these young men as well. It, it showed them the massive resistance time when schools were closed in Prince Edward County. It really helped them to realize the opportunities, again, we folks know opportunities, that they have education and where, and where we came from. And I think that really touched them as well. And thank you for improving, improve, approving, I'm sorry, the Todd Water College Tour, which we're going on next weekend. I want to thank you guys for that. We're going to go to Christopher Newport first thing Friday morning, well, like 10, 10:30. Then we're scheduled to go to Hampton at 1:30. We're going to Old Dominion at 4:00. We're staying the night in Norfolk, and we're going to Norfolk State for their First View, but we have one senior who's going to go down, and he's going to do the all-site admission. And hopefully, he'll get accepted to Norfolk State on that day. Here's just a few pictures, that's us at Virginia State at Open House. That's Lawwood College Tour, as you can see, we got females, males, night light, everybody that's just, every time. That's the Robert Russo Morton Museum. That's us making a little money at the car wash. We probably, like, again, we'll have some in the spring, I'll make sure you guys come and get your cars washed. We have done some volunteering work, some community projects, we do peer tutoring, that's one of our, individual in the basketball team went over, a lot of our kids that were playing basketball went over, they took some lead roles in, in reading and doing some other things, doing Dr. Seuss's birthday. We also, we participated in the food drive, we cleaned, cleaned up after the activity was over or the concert was over, we collected the food at the door, we packed it, put it in the truck, and sold some raffle tickets as well during that day. Again, fundraising, we're going to do car washing to advance all of, so come out with your car washing. Homecoming photos in the fall, which was really good. And we're going to try to do a cookie, a cookie dough sale in the next week or so. And with that money, we're going to try to do a, a scholarship breakfast, and we're going to give a little small scholarship to some of the participants in YEA. And Mr. Baller doesn't know it, but he's probably going to have to speak at that scholarship breakfast, we'd be honored to have. And that's our final slide, YEA empowerment of tomorrow's leaders. And that's one of our individuals reading Dr. Seuss's death. Time, I would, I would give them a chance.
Do they even introduce themselves until a grade period? And? Do they introduce themselves until a grade?
My name is Nick Washington, and I'm glad to be in this little organization.
Great.
Chris Washington, I'm an 11th grader from Land County High School, and I'm glad to be in the organization.
Jason Lee, I'm in the 2nd grade also, and I wouldn't consider myself that creative, but I did, I did like, I did text them.
These are probably three of our members for next year. I'm president, and I'm vice president, in terms of our practice, so they weren't able to join us. But again, these guys have been a foundation of the group.
Well, and I want to applaud you for taking a step in, in starting this mentoring program because it's so important for all of our students to have a mentor, but for you as an administrator to step forward and really take this on, I think is great. And, you know, Ms. Kellernhour talking about having something like this at the middle school.
Right.
So, that those, so that those students, when they come to the high school, not only will they have mentors who are teachers and administrators, but that they have students to look up to and know that they have someone that they can count on. And I think that that's, that's, it's really big in this time of, you know, with peer pressure and bullying and students just trying to find their way and giving them that a little extra nudge into knowing that they can do so much more beyond high school and to never listen to the doubters who always say you can't. And I think that, you know, this board and looking at assessment numbers and, you know, looking at, at scores, we're never satisfied with where we are. And so, I think, you know, us as the vision, we should never be satisfied with where we are, but always want to do more. So, thank you for taking your personal time to mentor these young men.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you guys for coming.